And going down the agenda, which is very limited, start with schedule appointments by your chief. Brian Keller.
So obviously it's other pressing issues like the meeting we just had, but I wanted to publicly thank the town officials and the Kingston residents for voting in the new fire station. Hopefully we'll make everybody proud with the new building that's more efficient and better quality and keeps the safety and the public in mind.
Very good, thank you. Actually, I'd like to thank all of those that showed up. I think it was a very good day for Kingston. And again, under the selectman Ellie, going down old business, All American Assisted Living, bond work.
You're gonna skip over reelection of all of those?
It, I'm going down to reorganization of boarders on the new business.
Okay, okay, so Mr. Garrett Miller has been rescheduled?
Yeah, we, I actually, he hasn't been scheduled, he's been canceled for tonight. We'll reschedule that another time.
Okay.
So we will...
And we have no public comment, right?
Uh, nope.
Then that's the chief. Okay.
So old business, All American Assisted Living, bond work completed.
So, two things. The letter that Glenn Koppelman sent to us, they discussed that with him, they pulled all of the signs with the exception of the one out front, which is gonna be removed, one temporary sign. All the others have been removed, I spoke to him, he removed them all. The second part of that is, I spent a few hours there on Friday, we did gram as well. There is problems with the repeater system, it needs to be reworked, and no, I would not return the bond at this time. So that, that's part of the condition, that for emergency services, we can communicate in and out of that building, and we currently cannot communicate in or out of that building. So I would not return the bond this time.
Okay. Any further comment on that?
Uh, just a question on that. Do you know how much they had for meeting? I mean, how much is the repeater system? Cause I thought they had like...
Sixty-three thousand?
Sixty, or they have seventy thousand held in escrow.
So, he was uncertain what he needed to do to fix it at that time. I know they spent forty or forty-five thousand dollars, I think that's what he told us, to put that current system in there. If that doesn't work, then he may need to do something different, other than putting another antenna on the roof. So I, I don't know what the cost will be to fix it. They know it was part of the agreement that we could communicate in and out of that building. Currently, fire can do that, I believe yours is working well, right? But because our system comes off our different tower, and it's a different, completely different system, they may have to change to a different type of repeater system. So I, I don't really answer that question.
I, I guess, my only question was if they were hot and proud about it, maybe they give us an estimate of what that's gonna cost, and then we can release the rest of it.
Yeah, he didn't know, cause he didn't know what he had to do. That, that was Friday afternoon, so he may have, I can call him tomorrow, he may have a, a better idea after he's looked into it a little bit.
Anything else on that? So we'll wait on that. When, you said you'll have a better idea on Friday afternoon, you said?
No, I went there Friday afternoon.
Oh, you went there, okay. Any idea of, uh, who's working on it, if you don't mind me asking?
Oh, it's a radio company way down in Mass somewhere, I forgot the name of it. It's a, it was a contract deal.
I would guess, it was part of the arrangement, um, they'll probably, if they want the money that quick, they'll be getting after their people to come up with a viable solution.
Definitely a problem.
Okay.
The, uh, the other thing I'd like to report to the board as well, based upon the letter that went to saddle up soon, and I was there today, and they've removed, they've removed the ice cream sign, and, and put back, or, or have, has redone the event parking sign, something Ellie talked about, something about moving a shed or something, so, um, they're gonna continue to work on that wishlist, and so I went down and verified those two things today.
So do they like to ask forgiveness instead of permission, is that the general way to operate for them?
I don't know, that's, I don't know, cause I, Phil might be able to answer that better than I can. The, uh...
Rich's letter.
The, the, it was Rich's letter. They, they asked me to get down and verify that some of these things are being done, so they, they call, I get down.
There are some outstanding items from their site plan that have not been attended to, um, we sent them a letter basically laying out those, and some other interactions beyond the site plan, in order to get them in compliance.
And answering your questions, they do neither.
They do neither?
I guess the, the good news is, progress has been made.
Yeah.
So that, that's the plus side, that's, that's the good thing.
I did, I did tell him I'd be back next week, and then he said he'd have some more stuff done, and I told him I'd verify it, report back to board.
Well, actually, if I'm correct, the letter basically gave him two options, A, go back to the planning board for a site plan review, or B, come before the select board, you know, but these are the outstanding lists, and it seems like he corrected some of the additions, some of the issues, so...
Yeah, and he said, he said he'd have some more stuff done by next week.
And if he doesn't, do we hence find him while he's in for deal or something?
I think the only thing we need to be cognizant of is, as we wade into this, is we have other issues, it's gonna bring us into direct conflict with the planning board and existing site plan before we start waiving requirements, we need to watch ourselves within that meeting, what we...
We haven't had that meeting yet, so, and he's fixing stuff on the list, so again...
I know, I just wanna bring this to everybody's attention before we get to that point, like, oh, wait a minute.
No, it, it appears that he wants to, at least my observation today, that he wants to comply and get it done, because he knows one more this way.
Okay. Anything else on that? Uh, the next thing is the deferred conversation plan, but that relates to Garrett Miller, so I would skip that part. New business.
One thing on the new business, uh, do we need to make a motion on our last meeting, what we did, and at least notify this, in case people weren't watching that meeting, the town hall will be closed, do we need that in motion form, and what we've done, and if nothing else, we need to announce it in this meeting, because some people don't turn their TV on until seven.
Yeah, I guess that wouldn't hurt, put it that way, so...
I didn't know if we needed a motion to do something...
I think we need a motion for that.
I think announcement would be appropriate, that, that the Board of Health made a decision in its meeting earlier to reduce the hours, uh, yeah, to, to lock the doors on the town hall for emergency services only, that there will be postings on both doors for phone numbers and contact information, in case someone needs to do something beyond what they can get off of some websites.
Yeah, we're restricted access to town halls, to, you know, emergent business, there will be people here that will be answering phones, uh, if you have any questions, before you make a trip down here, it'd be better to call the town hall and speak to the appropriate people, whether it's the assessor, the town clerk, the finance director, or our executive assistant.
Also about town meetings?
That all, well, before you go to a town meeting, we...
Talk to the people.
Yeah, talk to the appropriate boards before you go to a meeting, because it looks like all meetings are gonna be postponed, if not, you know, canceled.
Restricted to ten if you were possible.
Yep.
And just, just a point of order, that the fire station and police station are also limited access at this time?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it, it, actually, it, call before you go anywhere to see, and this is for the benefit of our employees and the residents, but if you have any questions, you can watch the video of our prior emergency management meeting.
Have trouble sleeping, you can watch the video.
And the state's giving us regular updates and recommending actions for us to take.
Almost daily.
Hourly at some points.
Yeah, well, it is, it's gonna escalate even more, I'm sure.
They said every six hours, and then they closed all restaurants three and a half hours later.
Yeah, yeah. Courthouses are closed, I mean, it's getting, it's, it's pretty restricted everywhere, so the, the biggest takeaway is call before you come to town hall, um, emergency services are still operating, so don't hesitate to call nine-one-one, call two-one-one if you have any questions about state issues, or you can always call the non-emergent line for the police or fire station.
Okay.
Next on the new business is reorganization of the board.
Make a motion to nominate Phil Coombs for chairman of the planning board.
Of the planning board?
Of the board of selectmen.
Board of selectmen, I was thinking about, I was thinking about, planning board, board of selectmen.
Sorry.
I say, I prefer the planning board, board of selectmen.
Hold on a second.
Okay, there is a motion...
You wanna hear that, Mr. Coombs?
I accept, thank you.
You would accept that, okay.
Well, there is a motion and a second for Phil Coombs to be, be chairman. Any further discussion?
Any further nominations?
What, well, I, I'm gonna do them individually, I guess, or actually, is there any other, is there any other nominations, I guess, for chairman?
Not really.
Well, there being none, I'm just, I'm, you're gonna learn some common procedure procedures from it.
Well, I could learn a lot, considering you've been moderator for thirty years.
Five years, thirty-five, yes.
Um, all in favor of Phil Coombs being chairman of the board of selectmen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, well, actually, any opposed, any abstentions? It's unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Vice chair.
And I nominate Kevin St. James for vice chair.
I'm gonna nominate Don Briggs for vice chair.
You need a second first, not the, running the meeting.
You're doing good.
Okay, we have two, we have motions, is there any seconds?
A second falls of them.
Okay.
It suggests that we choose by signature.
Okay, um, so...
And, and that Susan read out the results.
Okay.
How does that sound? We vote...
Would mine closer to you, though?
So, okay, so you're gonna...
We have two nominations for vice chair.
Right, you're gonna, you're gonna vote on them individually?
I, I would suggest that we vote on them...
Paper?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think both would be an excellent choice, and, um...
Anybody in the room would be an excellent choice.
Listen, if you wanna go excellent choices, I take the cake, I probably run more meetings than you guys up to election. That's all, I don't want to do...
Chair, I can sit. Yeah, we can six votes, and we'll know something's going on.
Thank you.
I thought we were dishonoring our... Here, I'll give you that, so, it doesn't look like that one's so...
It's gonna say, Mark and Secret Palace.
Okay, so there was a motion by Rich, seconded by Ellie for Don, and there was a motion by Phil, seconded by Ellie for me.
Correct.
Um, Susan has the secret ballot numbers, and she's gonna count them up.
Okay, so you want me to, you want me to read them out, or you just want me to figure it out and tell you?
Read them out.
Got one for Kevin, one for Don, one for Don, Kevin. Eye breaker, it, uh, three for Don Briggs, two for Kevin St. James, so...
So we have a vote for Don as vice chair.
Don, there's no conflict with you being a chief to be able to be a vice chair even on the board of selectmen, yeah, I felt I needed to ask that, okay?
All right, with that being done, I believe the gallows over to you.
All right, congratulations to both of you.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you for doing a good job.
So Kevin?
Thank you.
Kevin, thank you for you.
Who comes to next, Nadal?
I neglected to make up a list of the committees, but do you want to do that?
Well, yeah, that's the next. Yep, so, um, we have planning, budget, uh, HDC, heritage, conservation? Conservation. Heritage is kind of heritage and vision, Kingston vote, and planning is planning slash CIP, and HDC, you said that right?
Yeah.
Does anyone do Kingston days?
Yep. Is that it? That's it. Nice speaking. So right now, I'm doing conservation, heritage, and HDC.
I'll take conservation.
I'd like to stick on budget if I can, just for the simple fact it works the best for my schedule.
Now, I think Ellie's limited in which one she can take.
I would not wanna sit on planning, for obvious reasons.
Right, well, I'm taking planning.
Oh, okay.
But could you be on the HDC, or does their appeal go to you?
Well, the selectmen's appeal would go to the zoning board anyways, in which case I would have to reclose my, excuse myself, in the sixteen years I've been on there, we've only had one issue, uh, in a, in an appeal of administrative decision by the board of selectmen, so that would be, I mean, it's, I would not sit on it, we have a couple of alternates, so it's not a problem, but HDC, um, that might have more issues, but again, I, I could step down, cause it was, the only other was heritage and vision, in Kingston days, I, I can't go there, I don't think.
Well, I don't mind keeping heritage if we need me to.
If I go on HDC?
Cause it's one meeting a month, if, if you want it, that's fine, but...
Yeah, I think if you have any conflict, I can certainly step in for you, there's provisions for that.
Okay, that, that'd be great.
If I can fill in anyone's...
Cause when I looked at it, even running for selectmen, we, but, I, I was asked by a lot of people, isn't it a conflict if you're the zoning, being the selectman? It's not, it is not a conflict by state statute, uh, especially whereas we have so rare, but if we need to, um, if you would be my backup in cases of serious one, but you'd be a backup on the zoning, and that's, I'm, we wouldn't need that because I have two alternates, I would step back out of it, see what I'm saying, I would not have to sit on some zoning hearings if it was in conflict with the committee I was assigned to by the board of selectmen, that's what I'm saying to you. So if you put me on HDC, that's not a problem, and if there's an, an appeal to an HDC decision, I would not sit on it as a zoning board member, I would probably put the legal notice together for the board, and not sit on the hearing, and just sit on the audience.
Do you remain chair as ZBA?
Choose me.
Are you chair as he?
They re-elected me as chair.
Okay.
Correct.
So an alternate would sit in as, oh, you have a vice chair, right?
Listen, right, I have a vice chair, Larry Greenbaum's the vice chair of the zoning board, so he would run the meeting, or the hearing.
Yeah.
We had a situation the other night with sixty-two mil road, um, the gentleman and I had a conflict of opinions from the first hearing, I did not choose to sit on this one, I didn't wanna give him, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna rouse any tempers, so I sat out of it, uh, Chuck Hardison, alternate, he sat in, in my behalf, so there was a five-person sitting board, there was no problem, you need to, you should always have five people voting, because the petitioner could ask to postpone the meeting, but you'd want, you wanna be able to conduct business in a timely fashion, if you can, so I don't see a problem, I'd be happy to take HDC, um, and if there's a conflict from the ZBA, but I won't sit on the hearings.
So Eric, where's where you're at, Richard? I'd, I'd think keep heritage, do anything, and I guess if there's a conflict with planning, on that is, well, the thing is, there's theoretically three meetings coming up, I'm guessing they're gonna have a pretty compressed schedule, once all the dust dies out on this, so, but if you need that, I can certainly...
Is anyone still going to do the fire station building committee? I think that's the only other one that you represented.
Is there still a fire station?
I don't know.
Yeah, there, there's more now, because they're gonna be...
They are valid, the building station committee is valid till May, and then depending on if the members that are currently there want to remain on it, or if we go in a different direction, that'll be up to the members in the board.
I'll sit, if Kevin doesn't want to, I know Kevin's the member now, it's up to him.
You can take it, yeah.
So we're fully consulted?
Before we move off, I, I received a text from a member of the audience, that that we could not elect the vice chair by secret ballot.
The what?
Is that true? That we could not elect the vice chair by secret ballot?
We can do it any way we want.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because some of the audience, they are boozed out. We have to take it over the next, if it does not appear true, we'll take it over again, it's not a big issue.
As I recall, and I'm not spacing that on, on nothing, when we had this for the planning board, there was a discussion about secret ballots in that environment, and every board has the option of electing their own officers as they see fit.
Okay.
So however the process, and I believe this came up last year, when we were discussing this as well.
If I hadn't got that text, I wouldn't have even brought it up, because I...
Well, it wasn't secret last year, but...
No, it wasn't, but there, someone was asking whether we could do that on the rules, and weren't subject to that because of internal officers. Um, I got something else on the new business. Okay, do you have a committee liaison report, anyone?
Actually, we're gonna redo the liaisons.
That's true. Redo what?
Liaisons.
Isn't that what we just did?
This is your...
No, that was, well, the, employees for like, um, if, we have liaisons for Rich, for the fire department.
I see, okay.
Oh, that's nice.
All the different, those things.
Well, let's do our reports first, to close out.
Our evaluations.
No, our reports for any meetings that took place on our committees, so like, I'm sure you have something for planning board last week.
We didn't meet last week.
Oh, you did, all right. Uh, the inspectors did meet last week.
Election.
What's that?
It was the elections, right?
So they didn't meet. Um, inspectors did meet last week, and we made a lot of progress on the application process, I thought, we, I had pages of those to be distilled, but I think we made a lot of headway, obviously, things, I'll hold on that for a little bit, but, um, anybody else?
Building committee didn't meet, I believe they meet this Wednesday.
Okay, how many people?
Six o'clock.
They're meeting, not ten, uh, six o'clock.
Budget committee, I don't know when their scheduled meeting is, I think they have something scheduled for April, the good news is, there's a whole slate that ran, and so we got a pretty much full board anyways.
How many opening are there now?
Two, yeah, to be determined, is, um, there's one open, I think, that wasn't, that someone was putting in, was just past the filing period, and I believe, um, one person that got elected, talked about moving, so it might be two openings on the budget committee.
It's not too bad to go with...
Well, would they be going through, yeah, no, it's not that, I think there might be two openings.
So, on that note, um, I would be happy to continue on with the inspectors, um, if it's something that, if a lot of continuity there...
How, how many do we need? We need highway, fire, inspectors, what else do we cover?
Typically, planning would be the other one, um... I, I don't really do rec department updates, cause it really, I mean, Paul usually come in, if there's something that needs updating, so... But we need to have someone who is the rep to the, the rec department.
I remind you in recreation, and staying on that, with the fire department.
I do want to take highway and door guard.
Are you taking planning though? I do take the planning.
Well, I'm at the meeting, so I'm already given that.
You have an option on a link or...
What, actually, what's the list? I mean, it's town clerk, I guess, right, highway, but, I mean, we never really did town clerk per se, but...
She doesn't answer those.
No, nor does Rich.
I mean, you do high...
How about if, how about if you and Ellie do highway?
No, they don't, answer me. That's very weird.
Do you like me to be your liaison?
I don't think so.
Give me the party in the morning?
See, liaison is, if I have an issue coming up, I, I wanna just talk to one of you, and if you want me to talk to the rest of the board, I will, but I don't care which one I call on this issue that comes up. I, I just think liaisons should be changed up year to year, and I don't think they ought to stay with the same person. Inspector's a little different, first of all, that it's an easier thing for you to get to than it is for us, for one, because of when they meet.
Yeah, and it's, we're deep in transition, that's not gonna be an ongoing thing, it's just gonna be, uh, when we get it revised, it'll be, so, so...
That, I think for me, that would be a conflict because of the zoning board.
Yeah.
Meeting the inspectors, because too much of what's happening there gets rejected, and that comes with the CDW, so, as interesting as that might be, I, I can't do that one at all.
Which one?
Inspectors, could not do that.
What would you want to do?
I, I don't know, I, I'm the rookie, so it's, you know, I, I go along with whatever you guys suggest, and I can do the highway or not, or anything else with you, and back, oh, back up someone else on a different committee?
I mean, Rich, you're doing two committees that you have to go to each time, I, I would be pushing for Ellie for highway, cause Rich is an experienced, um, department head, and he can...
Teach me a lot.
Yeah.
And, and that's true, I mean, I do believe that.
Can you drive a truck?
No.
But she could be the wing person.
I could be a good wing woman, I do not have a CDL license.
You'll have one.
Now that'd be a first, gotta get up on it first of all.
Actually, I would encourage any one of you selectmen, the rival's one storm, they own stipulation, you gotta start beginning and end at the end, and do the hours that we do.
Wait a minute, all the mailboxes are on the passenger side.
That, that way you get blamed.
I'll tell you what, when you hit a rock wall or tree, you think that, that side plow's coming through the side of the truck.
Oh, Jesus.
When it hits, it hits hard, right, Rich?
It sure does.
Not winter today, let's not make that decision, but, but I'd be happy to do the highway, that's not a problem.
Okay, so I've got, I saw the inspector, Kevin for rec, Kevin for fire, and Ellie for highway.
I'll take rec.
Well, I, are we gonna take you away from fire, since you've been doing it for several years?
I've only been doing it for, um, one I had last one.
I just, I think they ought to change that, that's just my opinion, I'll take rec. Maybe you're getting paid off or something.
Yeah, I'm getting paid off.
Have you seen our budget?
No, I've seen all the free bills you go, actually, everywhere he goes.
Oh, Mr., I won't say it.
Everybody has before, I guess.
Um...
That's our...
Um, town clerk, I didn't know if you wanted to have someone as a liaison for her, and we didn't...
Well, and I also, I mean, someone's gonna be your point of contact as well, your current point of contact, so, um...
I can do that if you want.
Do what?
Be Susan's point of contact.
Let me do Tammy's in, be Tammy's?
Sure.
How does that sound?
Anybody got any objection, Rich?
What about Will, or you want to put that with me, too, since I've got planning, it's the same person? Are we trying to cover all the departments now?
Yeah.
I, I, the, the purpose behind it is so that, as Rich said, it's not him having to call five people to explain why he needs to get it, do something well with it, he can just call you, and you can disseminate that to us, however you see fit, so it's just a means of not making that talk to the selectmen of all the fires.
Yeah, and, and if it's an issue that needs to go before the board, it'd be a good opportunity to clear it one way or another, get it on the agenda.
And the way it typically works is, you'll do the evaluations for that department head, so...
And then I'm gonna go back?
Obviously, you're not gonna do one for Tammy, she's independently elected, you won't do one for Rich, well, you will.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy one, I think.
All right, anything else for you, Rich?
No, but Susan, would you, um, send that out to everyone?
Yeah, I'll make up a neat list for you.
Could you put together the emails so that I know, so I can get a group going for the board of selectmen, and that includes, I have yours anyway, so...
All right, uh, that concludes new business, and then tie it...
One more thing on the new business.
I do as well.
Um, there were two things to sign in the sign folder, that... Um, there were two things to sign in the sign folder that I held up about intention to cut. Do you know anything about how these came about, or?
There's an intent to cut in there?
Hmm?
There's an intent to cut?
Yeah.
It's for not filing, for, um.
For the Claire and, uh.
Not filing the paper for, um, for Resnahan and for Mr. Leclair.
That must be from, that's from Cindy.
I can't hear you.
It's from Cindy, because they never, uh, sent in their report, so that's why I'm, sorry, I'm baffled, because I gave it to Cindy to, um, follow up on, she does those.
So what, wasn't there a, an issue recently that we resolved with him?
These are both for Brandon Hand's lot, one is to the cutter and one is to Mr. Brezner. I'm guessing he probably has your advice as board to put totals after he took out like twice as much land as he thought trees as he was supposed to.
Okay, I really just want to find out how they came about, because we hadn't talked about them at all at board, so.
I think, I think they came forward last year and we hadn't gotten the report.
Okay.
Could be wrong, but I think that's what that is, that's the letter that goes out to them, saying we're missing a report.
Okay.
So intent to cut, Rich, um, before a ten acre piece is cut, like Brezner's lot.
Oh, I know.
They have to file intent to cut. At the end of the job, there's more paperwork that needs to be filed, which basically sets the amount of money that you pay the state and the town for the number of board feet for tons of material that have been shipped off site. It sounds like that has been done. Generally, that's the owner of the land's responsibility, but it's up to the logger to make sure that the owner does that, because obviously, he gets named also.
I know, I know the process, I just didn't know who started this letter. That's the town, that's the tax the town's gonna receive on it.
Yeah, for the, I know the state and the town both receive.
I have one other thing in the new business I already.
Yep, go ahead.
So I informed the board, um, twice in the past that I wrote a five carnage road, trash barrels, number of cars that are parked in the yard, and the number of complaints that I received, uh, on that particular property. I would ask, um, the board to generate, um, violation letter, so I could hand deliver it.
I had a question on that, because I noticed there was way more than five hundred registered vehicles there, so isn't that like automatically triggered, there's an R S A that?
There is.
Is that an illegal junkyard or something?
Yep, so he's, he has an unlawful junkyard, is what he has there, but, but it also encompasses the, the health issue as far as the trash barrels and trash being out there and all of that. So it's almost like the thing we did in the House of Landowners, it's a nuisance, it's a health nuisance, um, so I can, I can dig that up. I would ask the board that, um, to generate a letter, so I can hand deliver it, let them know that the town's serious about getting that property cleaned up. I receive complaints on a weekly basis about that property. I spoke to the general, in fact, I spoke to him again today, and he tells me that he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it, but it doesn't ever happen, so. I think he needs to know the board's serious about having to clean that, that up. I would, I would certainly welcome anyone that would like to go take a look at it to see what I'm talking about. In fact, I called Rich today to make sure, because since the last time I went there, they put no trespassing signs, uh, but they put them on the town. So he didn't want me to come in and take another peek, I think, so, but he actually put the trespassing, no trespassing signs in the wrong location, they put them on the town road, so.
That's five carnage road?
Five carnage, yeah.
So, probably in the last four years, we've been out there at least three times cleaning that mess up, the highway department. And, uh, I'm not really interested in doing it again, but obviously, you guys set the order down, we will. It's not a new problem, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess five years done.
Yes, sir.
Been going on, so it's time to make it stop.
It's, it's, if you drive in there, right to where the fort is, that's where Rich tells me where the town line stops, and take a look to the left. It is, it is a junkyard, he's in violation clearly of the New Hampshire statute.
And there are fines associated with that.
That's great. I mean, I think, I think on that letter, if we could give him a, a thirty day window, that this needs to be, commit compliance within thirty days, um, or further legal action.
Should look out at the intersection and see how many boats and things show up magically there. No. All right, anything else in new business? Public comment, seeing none.
Well, could be, go Graham. No, okay.
Uh, we have an application for facilities used for the Kingston Volunteer Fire Association. I myself haven't signed it because there's only three slots for the board of selectmen, there are five of us.
He's got an old one. I thought you could give him and just sign.
I know, it's only been two years since we've done it.
You need a motion to get that back?
Uh, so then, I said we'll waive it, the fees.
Uh, we can certainly make a motion to do so. Or so to say, make some money or reinforce it.
I, I. My own opinion, we set that fee in the start, already going out the gate, going against our own policy we just signed last week, isn't, is not a good idea. Um, so I think, you know, there's a policy in place, it's a normal fee, I'm sure the fight apartment would not have a problem paying it.
All right, come on.
It's a hundred dollars.
Hey, it's.
Don't you, don't you.
Me, uh, robbing Peter to pay Paul, but a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, if that, that's what you guys decided on, then.
How much are tickets?
Uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five and forty-five.
How many are you gonna sell, Rick?
Ellie, if you want, you can.
When is it gonna be? When is it gonna be?
Uh, June thirteenth.
Better hope, you better hope that.
That's planned for right now.
Excellent, fully.
It may be rescheduled or canceled.
That's, any public event, there, there.
We'll definitely give you a hundred dollars back.
Well, how many tickets this board gonna buy? There you go.
Uh, twelve hundred?
I don't know, they're, they're talking about this thing going until, well, I guess.
It's forty-two thousand dollars, I think they can afford the fee.
Seems, seems.
It's not the money, but that's beside the point.
Seems gonna be going to probably August, is what they're saying now.
Possible, but.
I mean, I'll be honest, what I would rather do is if, if we wanted to consider not charging them, then we should talk about it right now and eliminate Kingston nonprofits from right across the board, because, you know, because we're gonna be debating about the Boy Scouts, if they wanna do something out there, not a car wash. But if we're gonna start having this conversation now, we should relook at our policy rather than waiving, uh, but I think we just did this last week and no one brought it up. I'd be more than happy to revisit it, but I don't wanna do this every time.
Well, let's put it this way, if we leave it as is and go with the fees, we're gonna have requests every time something new comes up, and we may, down the road, decide, okay, we're gonna pass a policy that the nonprofits, the town cases, give a list, they're exempt from the fees of them, but they still have to get commission. You know, that's, you still want them once they use the planes or whatever, just say. I get, I did get one, yeah. I know it's not a lot of money, I understand that, I understand that.
I look at it as anyone that was gonna use the plane, whether, for whatever reason, it's gonna be some sort of moneymaker anyways, and a hundred dollars, you know.
And, and I'll play devil's advocate here, that the reason those were set there is so we're recouping the custodial fees, while it may be, and I was in favor of allowing Boy Scouts to come in here and do food drive, because it was, and it directly mandated the welfare office and, and it was something we hadn't voted, we just voted in about two minutes before that, but, um, I think just to catch the, the custodial fees was kind of the gist of that.
They canceled, by the way, the food drive.
They did?
Yeah.
See, that's a situation where they're not actually raising money, we might want to waive it in that circumstance, because it's not like you're selling something to make money at it.
And, and while it isn't worthy cause. The intent of the fee was just to cover the custodial life and more.
Yeah.
Kevin, I need to go to the other side.
Uh, we have a re-.
Did you sign?
I did, oh.
He got the. Door response, fire station.
Um, still have the special event license, but we discussed that with Sal, so I feel we resolved that.
Yeah, I plan on.
Giving that anyway, it's.
Yeah, I plan on going back next week to see what he's, uh, completed. I told him I'd be back, and, uh, he said he'd have some more stuff done, so. So let her inform you to set up a, a point of this board, so. You want him to do that, or do you want him to? Eventually. What do you spend?
And we have two, uh, veteran property tax items.
He skipped over the dealer, retail dealer.
Uh, just going, as I pull them out of the file there, and I promise you, this is the only time I will come in here without having read everything in this file.
I'm not sure if I got that back again.
You shouldn't have it back, Ellen's got it, I mean, Ellen's got it, she sent in them a letter, tell them that until the lots brought into compliance, it will not be issued.
And they've done a lot. Yeah, she checks everything on the D Q fourteen to make sure it's in compliance, and so, I, I, give the look real quick, but she does a lot.
Yeah, just looking to see if that forms there.
Uh, we also have the Kingston lot tramp policy that needs to be signed by the board of selectmen, nothing has changed, I'm gonna say it.
No, it's just updated for this year.
Lot tramp?
The vote, or the, or however that works, it has, should be the letter signed by all of you, and so there's just a form.
So this exemption application, that is number eight on the agenda, that should probably be on the board.
Yeah, I want it down to look at that, I think he knows who they are, if you help me out with that.
Um, I believe that leaves only the minutes. I'll wait for the power out. See that'll be the end here.
That just came to me today.
I'll just read this, uh, to the Kingston Board of Selectmen and the Highway Department, council, this is from, uh, Powaw Pond Council, Kip Kaiser. Councilors, procure permits to open nav- navigational channels for use by the general public through Hampshire D E S. As part of this process, we need to transport harvested vegetation to a composting site. We have selected one in Kingston. Question is, would the town be available with help with transporting the material to the device? I am available to answer questions.
Call Evy Nathan. I mean, she's a conservation commission chairman, when she, she wants to provide transportation, wouldn't that be appropriate?
Well, Rich would probably be the one, because he's.
I'm a little dumb drugs.
Got it, sorry.
Well, I, I, I have no information, I didn't receive this like you, Phil, a half hour ago, forty-five minutes ago, um, how much material, where's it going to?
So you haven't left this in the box?
Uh, this is not, this is way out, out of our wheelhouse regularly. We have helped, uh, Kingston Lake, uh, I think we've done Powaw Pond, we've helped them with their spring cleanup, when they clean up the debris around the lake, the shore fronts, and we haul that for them, but I got a feeling this is a big job. I, I got a feeling this is gonna be hundreds and hundreds of loads of, uh, somehow they're gonna harvest the weeds that are in the Powaw, bring them to shore, and then they've gotta be transported somewheres, I, I don't have enough information. Somewhere is to dry and co- actually to compost, I would imagine. I got a feeling it's going to Landscapers Depot, but I don't know that. How many, how many loads, what kind of a timeframe, um, am I gonna commit trucks to daily operation, or is this just, uh, you know, move twenty loads of material at my leisure? I have no clue, so I can't comment on.
Do we have enough in our plate now with coronavirus that, to add something new and unknown, a little bit of a burden on the town? Especially last minute, you have no, we don't have any information to know how big a job it is and how it impacts our staff.
Well, let's do this, um. Would you like to reach out to him and just get an idea of?
Sure.
The scope of it, I mean, if it's just one dump truck, one of the verses, three hundred, and then revisit that.
I have one other thing on the new business I forgot.
Okay.
Um, I did have a sit down, um, this, last week with Steve Lever of Affinity Lighting, he has a proposal all set for us to convert the streetlights. Um, what I asked him to do was if he could give me the booklets, or get them to Susan so that he could distribute, so we could take a look at them, and then we'll have him come in and go through the numbers with us. Uh, basically, what it was, um, I wanna say it was twenty-two thousand dollars, but it's strictly, it's all financed through Unitil. So what Unitil ends up doing is fronting you the money, um, over what you, the anticipated costs, we pay thirty, we pay right now twenty-seven thousand a year for street lighting. So, uh, they would come in and change of all, okay, to L E D, and the savings was, I wanna say seventy-five percent right off the bat for this year. But we would continue paying Unitil that twenty-seven thousand, hey, for them to come in and do it, is what it comes down to. He'll come and explain it, but, um, right now, we've got enough stuff going on, I'll have him coordinate with Susan at a time when we're able to look at it. Uh, but they have done work everywhere. Uh, they were, they were a local company out of Portsmouth, but they did Exeter, they did Raymond, um, they did Portsmouth, Durham, uh, but he has a whole proposal together for us.
Do you guys have anything else?
So, like Graham, thanks to the voters for supporting the articles this year at town meeting, appreciate it. Obviously, this will be my last year's elected road agent. Was it thirty-five years, Ellie? Yeah. Um, so we'll, we'll deal with, uh, health issues, my health issues. I'll be looking to present, be presenting to the board of selectmen, I don't have it with me tonight, proposal for a contract, um, so I can carry on doing this job for three more years, that's my intention. Whether my health lets me do that, we'll see. And, yeah, I guess that's it.
Um, the other thing Rich had talked about was bringing on an administrative assistant. Sorry, I was looking at you like, why are you here? We just talked about that.
Yeah, you, yeah.
Do we want to, do you have a job description written up for that yet?
Yeah.
And I guess, the main thing is to discuss this among the board, um, I don't wanna waste his time, but I think it's probably something that is needed at least, uh, to start at a part-time level.
So I'll, I'll chime in there, um, I brought it to Phil's attention, um, we all knew I was diagnosed with cancer a year ago. Um, we wasted a year of not having, I think, a full-time administrative assistant at the highway garage. So there's some, um, knowledge of what goes on there, uh, there's an awful lot of stuff stored up here in this pea brain, um, that no one has a clue what has to happen. Um, take it, you know, the landfill, the reports we get from landfill and correspondence that has to happen. You know, one of my comments to Phil was, once this board gets constituted, um, the only two people that have a clue about the landfill are Mark Hites and myself, he's gone now as selectman. You know, I might be gone, who knows? The board of selectmen, I, needs to understand what's going on there, what needs to continue to go on, uh, what the reports that come from all the testing and, and the documentation that has to happen at state level. Uh, and that's just one small piece of what I do for the town of Kingston. I've got a great person that, that, you know, it's the police department's, um, administrative assistant, she does a great job for me, but she's available forty-five minutes a day. That's not enough to run a department, that's one point five million dollars. And that's, uh, that's what my budget is, when you add all expenses, block grid, building maintenance. And that's, that's what my budget is, when you add all expenses, block grid, building maintenance, highway, it's, it's one point five million dollars. There's a lot of stuff that goes on on a daily basis. Um, there needs to be some institutional knowledge that carries on after I'm, I'm done, whether I retire or have to quit because of health reasons. Just something you, it wasn't budgeted this year. But I'll, you know, one point five million dollar budget, I can find money. So, needs to be talked about, needs to be figured out, I'd suggest you not waste another year. Because I don't know if I got it in me. Graham, wait, thank you.
I guess my, my add-on to that is, if you sit next to Rich and he has the same burner as you in the voting deck, see how many calls he gets?
I'll still reach it for Mike.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, so.
I, I think there, there needs to be some assistance in there to run the office side of that for him.
What do you think, full-time or part-time?
He, he wanted a full-time person, I, I thought we could start out with a part-time person to just try him out, start getting some of the, you know, get him into the position and see how it works out.
You can't, you can't legally.
Right.
You can't legally do it without a vote of the town.
For a part-time or a full-time?
No, there's a part-time position, you can back with that.
Right.
But you need.
I think there is an approved part-time position.
Yeah, but you can't, the town voted years ago to create a new position, it has to go through the town meeting.
I had a quick conversation with Rich, and he mentioned that at that meeting, he wasn't sure if that was actually for just that year or in perpetuity, and I asked Susan to do some quick research, um, who was there?
Find anything definitive in those years.
It's there, yeah.
Tradition has always been that a new, when you create a new position,
Yes.
it goes before the, the board of the town.
And I don't disagree with that, but I mean, there is a part-time position that.
Yeah, I think there was a part-time approval in twenty hours a week, a long time ago.
And it makes sense to start out as part-time and let that position develop. You might go through two or three people before you find the right one anyway, until it bridges us to March and go from there.
Yeah, it's gonna definitely go before the town. Actually, there's a Supreme, Supreme Court decision in Bolton versus Field, that in the lack of any town needing action for the Selectment Act, but if the town meeting has act, acted, then you don't have the authority to do that, no means no.
Right, once, once it's voted, it's just like, like the panels for this room, they voted no, that we cannot purchase them.
You can't even spend a penny on them, because they voted.
Which is really too bad, I guess, we'll ask again next year.
Yep.
I did find a bunch of those boards in my car.
I'm being told it's a budget committee policy per town, vote of the town.
Okay.
So, um, him and I have spoken about that, obviously, and they're gonna be just wrapping down. So probably, you know, this is one of those things where you help him come up with the job description, and then he can bring that before the board and but again, that is a position that was there up until two years ago, everybody was filled, and then.
Someone left when we moved up.
Yeah, and Don's been very helpful, you know, loaning his employee to help Rich, but she's mostly just doing purchase orders for him, and so I think I think it, he needs help kind of, the people who are just calling to call or complain or just looking for him or whatever, you know, there's gotta be a gatekeeper there kind of controlling that.
Well, let's, let's start out with a part-timer that would eventually end up as a full-timer, and get a job description, go and bring it back here, and then go from there. I'm sure we won't have, under these current circumstances, we may find someone good.
Yeah, and I, I mean, my, my comment to him was, it could be someone working others' hours, but has a phone that can forward from the office and can take calls for him outside of the office.
So do we wanna advertise right now?
Well, let's, 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 let's not.
Keep it as discussion, that's what I'm wondering.
Keep it as discussion for now, let's, well, you need a job description, let's work on the job description.
And there is one existing for the previous person who held that, but I think it needs to be expanded out as far as establishing SOP binders on the wall. There's a snowstorm, these are all the things that happens.
Susan, if you could help me out by getting a copy of the job description that exists, and then I'll make a couple copies and work with Rich about updating that.
I'm here to support my select.
Can I throw the restaurant a bar?
Tonight's the last night, they can go.
Uh, so I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
We don't have the minutes.
So moved. If I look it up, I'll.
Okay, any discussion?
March ninth, just to do that. Alright, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posted, stain, one.
The next meeting, if we're gonna be having teleconferences, or we're having daily availability, I think it's probably worthwhile getting onto maybe the every other week schedule. Lower, like I just.
At least by now.
But I think the key concern is having everybody in the same room, someone's come, come down, but I think we need to really work on isolating, make sure that that doesn't spread, so you can minimize exposure.
And if we have to sign documents or purchase orders or payroll documents, go into the office and do so.
And I think, you know, as long as we're available once a day telephonically, I think we can make this work. We can deal with situations as they arise.
I don't think anyone in this group is going on a cruise.
I don't think you can go on a cruise, I think we're on it right now.
Couldn't find a ship right now, going on a cruise, if you wanted.
Full day, and I don't see any other cruise.
You don't know what you're missing.
So next meeting, we're not, no meeting next week then?
We'll go to the, we'll just.
Whatever, next week.
Go to the following week, and then I guess we can assess at that point. Are you good with that?
Yep.
I'll meet up with Susan in the morning and we'll get that conference sign established, we'll get a text message, text message and email distribution list set up for this emergency management personnel and the select board, just to make sure that everybody's on this call.
I wouldn't be surprised there's a delay in that, because I think they're getting a lot of requests for that right now.
I, I mean, they have hundreds of thousands of new numbers, they can just, and it's so, it shouldn't be something that's out of stock or ahead of head of suggestions, so if you wanna talk to him, to.
Also, the school uses it, she might wanna talk to her IT guy.
Yeah. Anything else?
Uh, one non-public, actually.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, we're not gonna enter, I want to entertain a motion to go into non-public section.
Under RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, Romanule two A, personnel.
And then the additional one would be the one that's inflammatory to someone.
I think it's C.
Uh, exempt.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
You have to state your name.
You have to state your name, I'll let you all ask you, sorry.
Kevin Singh, James.
Usually you do it by the name.
Alright, I don't know where the camera is, so, uh, that concludes the televised portion of this evening. Please be aware that the town hall will be open for appointment only by emergency, or for urgent business, and there will be contact information posted outside the door, sanitization procedures will be enforced. Thank you.